...employees and hundreds of job classifications, the City of Los Angeles has the position and advancement opportunities that you're looking for. The City of Los Angeles is an equal opportunity employer. If you're looking for a great job with excellent benefits, please consider these listings carefully. If you're interested in any one of the jobs listed here, please call the Personnel Department at 213-847-9240 for more information and an application. It's time you considered the City of Los Angeles as an employer. With more than thirty thousand employees and hundreds of job classifications, the City of Los Angeles has the position and advancement opportunities that you're looking for. The City of Los Angeles is an equal opportunity employer. If you're looking for a great job with excellent benefits, please consider these listings carefully. If you're interested in any one of the jobs listed here, please call the Personnel Department at 213-847-9240 for more information and an application. It's time you considered the City of Los Angeles as an employer. With more than thirty thousand employees and hundreds of job classifications, the City of Los Angeles has the position and advancement opportunities that you're looking for. The City of Los Angeles is an equal opportunity employer. If you're looking for a great job with excellent benefits, please consider these listings carefully. If you're interested in any one of the jobs listed here, please call the Personnel Department at 213-847-9240 for more information and an application. You're watching Crime Watch, brought to you by the City of Los Angeles Police Department and L.A. City View 35. The City of Los Angeles is offering the following rewards for information leading to the identity, arrest, and prosecution of the person or persons responsible for committing the crime. The deadline for each reward is seen on your screen, accompanied by the phone number and the detective handling the case. Basic information about the victim and the crime, such as date and place, is stated. However, complete information surrounding the crime may be only discussed on the phone with the detective assigned to the case. If you have any information that might assist the LAPD in solving this crime, you're urged to contact the number on your screen. Each investigation is filed under a number which is also on your screen. You will need to refer to this number when calling the detectives with your information. If you wish to provide anonymous tips regarding a crime that you may have information about, please call the number on your screen. However, anonymous witnesses will not receive the award. You're watching Crime Watch, brought to you by the City of Los Angeles Police Department and L.A. City View 35. The City of Los Angeles is offering the following rewards for information leading to the identity, arrest, and prosecution of the person or persons responsible for committing the crime. The deadline for each reward is seen on your screen, accompanied by the phone number and the detective handling the case. Basic information about the victim and the crime, such as date and place, is stated. However, complete information surrounding the crime may be only discussed on the phone with the detective assigned to the case. If you have any information that might assist the LAPD in solving this crime, you're urged to contact the number on your screen. Each investigation is filed under a number which is also on your screen. You will need to refer to this number when calling the detectives with your information. If you wish to provide anonymous tips regarding a crime that you may have information about, please call the number on your screen. However, anonymous witnesses will not receive the award. You're watching Crime Watch, brought to you by the City of Los Angeles Police Department and L.A. City View 35. The City of Los Angeles is offering the following rewards for information leading to the identity, arrest, and prosecution of the person or persons responsible for committing the crime. The deadline for each reward is seen on your screen, accompanied by the phone number and the detective handling the case. Basic information about the victim and the crime, such as date and place, is stated. However, complete information surrounding the crime may be only discussed on the phone with the detective assigned to the case. If you have any information that might assist the LAPD in solving this crime, you're urged to contact the number on your screen. Each investigation is filed under a number which is also on your screen. You will need to refer to this number when calling the detectives with your information.
You are watching Community Calendar, brought to you by L.A. City View Channel 35 and the participating departments of the City of Los Angeles. You can watch Community Calendar weekdays, Monday through Friday, at 8:00 a.m., 12:30 p.m., 5:30 p.m., and 11:00 p.m. Tune in to find out what the city is doing in your neighborhoods. From community festivals, parades, and neighborhood cleanups, to official city meetings, public hearings, and other important activities that you want to know about. All announcements are for an advanced two-week period. For city activities prior to this two-week period, log on to www.lacity.org and follow the link to citywide calendar and agendas. If you are interested in a particular announcement and wish to receive more detailed information, call the phone number listed for the event or log on to the city's homepage at www.lacity.org. L.A. City View Channel 35 is pleased to bring this program to our viewers. If you missed any portion of this segment, please call 213-485-7561 for additional information. You are watching Community Calendar, brought to you by L.A. City View Channel 35 and the participating departments of the City of Los Angeles. You can watch Community Calendar weekdays, Monday through Friday, at 8:00 a.m., 12:30 p.m., 5:30 p.m., and 11:00 p.m. Tune in to find out what the city is doing in your neighborhoods. From community festivals, parades, and neighborhood cleanups, to official city meetings, public hearings, and other important activities that you want to know about. All announcements are for an advanced two-week period. For city activities prior to this two-week period, log on to www.lacity.org and follow the link to citywide calendar and agendas. If you are interested in a particular announcement and wish to receive more detailed information, call the phone number listed for the event or log on to the city's homepage at www.lacity.org. L.A. City View Channel 35 is pleased to bring this program to our viewers. If you've missed any portion of this segment, please call 213-485-7561 for additional information. You are watching Community Calendar, brought to you by L.A. City View Channel 35 and the participating departments of the City of Los Angeles. You can watch Community Calendar weekdays, Monday through Friday, at 8:00 a.m., 12:30 p.m., 5:30 p.m., and 11:00 p.m. Tune in to find out what the city is doing in your neighborhoods. From community festivals, parades, and neighborhood cleanups, to official city meetings, public hearings, and other important activities that you want to know about. All announcements are for an advanced two-week period. For city activities prior to this two-week period, log on to www.lacity.org and follow the link to citywide calendar and agendas. You're watching L.A. City View Channel 35.
2007, our Los Angeles City Council meets three times per week, on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10:00 a.m. All meetings are open to the public. And for those of you who cannot make it down to City Hall, the meetings are televised via cable on Channel 35 or can be viewed by visiting our website at www.lacity.org or by council phone at 213-621-CITY, C-I-T-Y. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alecon Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, West, and Zine Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you very much. The meeting is now in session. Madam Clerk, first item of business.
Approval of minutes.
Councilmember Gruel moves. Councilwoman Han seconds. Any commendatory resolutions?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Smith moves. Councilmembers- Miembro Consejo Smith, se mueve. Miembros Consejos, Zine, seconda.
Madre Presidente, ¿quería escuchar comentarios públicos en este momento?
Sí, eso sería bueno. Creo que tenemos algunos tarjetas de oradores bajo “comentario público”, y nuestro primer comentario es de Sr. Arnold Sachs. Sr. Sachs.
Buenos días, miembros Consejos. Muchas gracias. Solo quería abordar algo sobre un tema que estará en la agenda, aunque fue oído en la Cámara cerrada. El caso de la ciudad contra Burrito King y su desacuerdo de leasing. Y aprecio el hecho de que el Comité de Finanzas y Poderes fue capaz de aclarar algo de información para mí sobre otro acuerdo de leasing que trajo a la atención del Comité de Comercio, Comercio y Turismo, el Comité de Audiencias y Gente Eficiente, y la reunión del Comité de Transporte. Ese leasing sería el que involucra al tercer party en LAX, donde están leasing propiedad de la ciudad a una camioneta de almuerzo y recopilando $27,000 un mes, lo cual paga el salario para esta organización sin fines de lucro, cuyo beneficio principal es supervisar sus propias operaciones en el aeropuerto. No hay beneficio directo para la ciudad. En su hacer, me hace preguntar si yo fuera a ir, digamos, a la playa de Venice y puse una camisa en el suelo, y alguien me salió y dijo: “Me gustaría lease esa camisa de ti para que pueda vender mi merchandising”. Yo, actuando como un tercer party, podría lease esa camisa a alguien, ellos podrían vender su merchandising, y si alguien le preguntara qué estaban haciendo, podrían usar las operaciones en el aeropuerto como la base para ser legalmente empresarial. Si la ciudad está dispuesta a condonar el hecho de que un tercer party está operando sobre la propiedad de la ciudad, recopilando un leasing, tiene sentido que la ciudad no pueda deshacerse del leasing, el party que está allí, porque no tienen un acuerdo con ese party. Nadie tiene un acuerdo con ese party. Ese party ni siquiera debería pagar el alquiler. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, señor. Sr. Michael Hunt es nuestro próximo orador.
Este es Shorten Consejo. Bueno, nadie está aquí hoy, pero sin embargo, todavía tengo que hablar de integridad a través de la honestidad es siempre la mejor política. Creo que ustedes oyeron de Rocky, y es mejor, ya saben, solo ser honestos con los votantes y ser honestos con la gente. Creo que hemos llegado tan lejos como a estar en ningún lugar con Rocky. Creo que el mayor problema que vemos, y se dio a conocer en el último mes, es difícil para él manejar una familia de cuatro, si bien es la segunda mayor ciudad de Los Ángeles. Creo que muchos de nosotros estamos de acuerdo con eso. Vamos a estar aquí hasta que el voto en el 42/15 haya sido completamente repelido. Hablamos de honestidad, pero aún así nuestro gobierno de la ciudad no nos da toda la honestidad, y lo que haga es como si le dijera a la gente. Cuando tu propio abogado de la ciudad te mentira y vuelves, vuelves de 1963 y ves el sueño en lo que todos los afroestadounidenses marcharon por Washington, y descubres que el racismo sigue vivo en el abogado de la ciudad, y no importa cómo lo veas, eso es lo que es. Cuando me arrestan 24 veces y todavía lo has hecho mal, y no puedes admitir que eres correcto. Ya sabes, ahora es hora de que nuestro Consejo de Ciudad salga a la mesa, ya sabes, y lo tome. Bien, gracias, Sr. Hunt.
Muchas gracias. Nuestro próximo orador será Sr. Matthew Dowd.
Bueno, gracias. Despierta, todos. Es hora de escuchar. Hay un artículo en el Argonaut justamente anoche. Consejo de la Ciudad, Consejo de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles considera revisar las ordenes de venta de la calle Oceanfront. Pero deberíamos reescribir el título. Debería ser Boardwalk vendors force Consejo de la Ciudad a reconsiderar con una demanda federal. Y la historia aún más grande que perdieron es que nos forzamos a ello sin un abogado. Lo hemos llevado a la corte federal. Obtuvimos estas decisiones. Este aquí, de Judge Suzanne Siegel, que dice: “Deja abiertos amplios canales alternativos de comunicación de la información, y elementos que están inextricablemente entrelazados son protegidos”. Así que lo que estoy diciendo es que sabemos de lo que estamos hablando cuando se trata de este primer amendment en la playa de Venice. Ahora, tienes abogados allí ahora mismo, $500 por hora, todos discutiendo sobre, oh, ¿qué item es esto? ¿Qué item es aquello? Pero el juez federal ya lo dijo, y voy a ser animado con esto porque estoy cansado de venir aquí, Sr. Abogado de la Ciudad. Esto no es divertido. Esto es discriminación contra los afroestadounidenses. El juez lo dijo. ¿Tiene un componente de discurso? Así que llama a Bill Rosendahl y Tom Labonge a organizar una reunión conmigo y vamos a llegar a la base de ello. Porque tus abogados de la ciudad están costando a la ciudad miles y miles de dólares hablando mierda de locura sobre algo que es muy simple. Y si no sabemos qué es un componente de discurso, ¿qué hemos estado haciendo en la Cámara de Ciudad todo este tiempo? Ejerciendo nuestro
Muchas gracias. Nuestro próximo orador será Sharon Brewer en el Valle de San Fernando.
Hola, Sharon Brewer. Encino, Consejo de la Ciudad, 28 de junio de 2007, retos de elección. De hecho, hasta esta mañana no he recibido ninguna respuesta de la email de ayer a la Comisión de Relaciones Humanas sobre ellos recibiendo mis cinco retos. Fue una solicitud de correo electrónico segunda. También me pregunto si hay un conflicto de interés con la HRC mirando mis retos, mis cinco retos, en que estoy cuestionando las acciones de los empleados de Dun, incluyendo a un ex personal del HRC, Arturo Pina, y que podría haber estado involucrado en dejar que la elección de Encino siga adelante cuando no se había aprobado sus procedimientos de elección. También quiero saber que el año pasado terminé y desafié la elección de Encino, y desafié su elección porque los procedimientos de elección no estaban en conformidad con los procedimientos de elección ciudadana y que no siguieron el cronograma. Una vez más, mis retos este año están sobre los mismos problemas. Dun no fue a asegurar que los procedimientos de elección estuvieran en conformidad. La IEA, que posiblemente hubiera sido pagada $800 para supervisar la elección de Encino, no aseguró que los procedimientos de elección de Encino estuvieran en conformidad. Y terminas yendo y teniendo a Encino no siguiendo su cronograma y getting the word out to the public. Lo otro es, realmente quería, sabría si estuvieras pasando por la agenda, porque dije en una tarjeta sobre un item cerrado que tenía que ver con el burrito King, y habría usado mi comentario público para poder dar alguna información sobre eso. Pero no estoy recibiendo ningún responde de Dun, de la HRC, que es supuesto que está mirando los retos para Encino. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, y de vuelta a la Cámara de Ciudad. Nuestro último orador para comentario público será Sr. Candido Maras.
Gracias, Madre Presidente, miembros Consejos. Todos leíeron el periódico de hoy. “Ducking Responsibility: DWP Union Deserves Much of the Blame for Utility Crisis”. ¿Algún de ustedes vio la reunión de comisionario de DWP ayer? ¿Vieron a Sr. Darcy salir de la audiencia cuando Sr. Pastores iba a hacer sus comentarios? Creo que la culpa ha sido puesta en el mal lugar. La Unión tiene alguna responsabilidad, pero creo que la Unión ha hecho su parte. Sr. Darcy ha hecho su parte para representar a su gente. Todos sabemos que tenemos una infraestructura que está fallando. Muchas veces antes, la gente ha venido a ti y dado indicaciones de que hay un problema en DWP. Había un gerente general de gestión por el nombre de Mo Chadre que envió una carta hace cuatro años diciéndole que la infraestructura estaba fallando. ¿Qué pasó con él? Fue movido a otra sección. Tenías una joven señora de mantenimiento, Sandra Miranda, que vinieron y mostraron evidencia de los problemas allí. Nada fue hecho. La infraestructura está fallando. Necesitamos que ustedes y el alcalde se levanten y tomen el cargo de esto. Sr. Presidente, miembro Consejo, no podemos seguir con esto más. Un par de semanas atrás, el artículo 48, que era sobre el Tránsito Instituto, consejero Greg Smith, preguntó la pregunta: ¿Dónde está el dinero por el centavo? Es un programa que puede funcionar, pero, ¿está funcionando? Si hay problemas, cuéntenos qué son los problemas. De nuevo, les estoy preguntando. Los trabajadores de DWP son grandes trabajadores. Tenemos 9,000 policías. Tenemos 8,900 trabajadores de DWP tratando de hacer lo mismo en el mismo área. Estos son buenos, harderos. Pero tenemos un problema, y espero que pronto o tarde ustedes tomarán el cargo y se dará cuenta de que necesitan participar. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias. Eso es nuestro último comentario público. Creo que, Madam Señor, si pudimos pasar por la agenda ahora.
Madre Presidente, hay una solicitud a considerar. Un abogado de la ciudad exige que el artículo 43 sea continuado hasta el 25 de julio.
Sin objeción. Creo que Sr. Zine puede tener una solicitud también.
¿Quiero mover 15, por favor?
Está bien.
Gracias.
Está todo el agenda?
No, necesitamos pasar por la agenda, así que...
Por favor.
Bien. Item 1 a 14 son items notificados para una audiencia pública. Item número uno es la tabulación de la cuestión de ordenanza para establecer un Distrito de Aumento de Negocios. Los resultados de la cuestión son los siguientes. 97.52% están en favor y 2.48% en contra. Con el apoyo de la mayoría, la acción recomendada es adoptar la ordenanza.
No hay tarjetas de oradores en este tema.
Hay una tarjeta de oradores en el artículo número uno, Madre Presidente.
Lo siento, no tengo eso aquí.
Madre Presidente, ¿estamos pasando por la agenda?
Sí, estamos pasando por la agenda.
Estamos pasando por los temas 1 a 14.
Voy a llamar 14 especial para el presidente, Garcetti. No, 17. ¿Para qué es 14? Huizar. Huizar, Garcetti.
Entonces, ¿es los temas 14 y 17?
Sí, gracias.
Bien, gracias.
Para quienquiera.
Cuando lleguemos a ese punto, Madam Señor.
Hasta ahora tenemos especiales sobre los temas 1 y 14.
Bien, ahora esos temas, el resto de los temas están ante nosotros. Abre el rol. Cierre el rol. Tabulate el voto.
11 ayes.
Bien. Segunda orden de la vida.
siguientes son los temas 15 a 22, y esos son los temas en los que han tenido audiencias públicas. El artículo 15 es la confirmación de un oficial de la ciudad. ¿Querría sostener esto en la mesa?
Creo que este es el tema que Sr. Zine llamó fuera de orden porque tiene que desaparecer temprano, así que lo dejaremos hacerlo. Y Miss Han, ¿tienes un tema en esto?
17 de nuevo, para alguien.
Miss Han, se llama 17 especial, por, en nombre de Sr. Garcetti. Muchas gracias. ¿Algunos otros especiales, colegas? Bien, Madam Señor, abre el rol. Cierre el rol. Tabulate el voto.
11 ayes.
Bien, siguiente orden de la vida.
La siguiente orden de la vida son los temas 23 a 35 y 46 sobre la agenda de continuación, y esos son los temas en los que no han tenido audiencias públicas. 10 votos son requeridos para considerar.
Bien, ¿hay algún especial en eso?
Sí. Oh, se llama 34 especial para mí.
Muy bien, gracias. Bien, ¿algunos otros especiales, colegas? items, Madam Señor, por favor abre el rol. Cierre el rol. Tabulate el voto.
11 ayes.
Siguiente orden de la vida.
Los temas 36 a 45 son items cerrados. ¿Querría sostener esos en la mesa?
Sí, eso estará bien por ahora. Sr. Reyes, ¿tienes alguno?
Sí, es un poco incómodo. Ayer fue el tema 31. Si pudiera considerar ese tema, aunque en el distrito 14 me preguntó nuestro CEO para ver un asunto técnico, pero mi comprensión es que el consejero Huizar está en camino, y quiero asegurarme de que le dé el respeto y la cortésia.
Creo que 31 está en la mesa ya.
Sí, y creo que Sr. Huizar está aquí, en el edificio.
Solo quiero asegurarme de que no lo pasemos a él.
Bien, genial. Bien, vamos a mantener 31 en la mesa. Bien, entonces los demás temas, bien, hemos abierto el rol, cerrado el rol, tabulado el voto, y estamos manteniendo los temas cerrados por ahora. Bien, entonces volvamos al principio, por favor. Primera orden de la vida. Sr. Zine, tu tema está encendido.
Gracias. 15. ¿Debes anunciarlo?
El tema número 15 es la confirmación de Sr. Eric L. Holloman a la Ciudad de Los
Buenos días, miembros Consejos.
Buenos días. Sr. Holloman, gracias. Gracias por estar aquí. Gracias por su servicio. El alcalde ha solicitado su reanunciación al board de las LACERS, y usted ha servido allí por cuánto tiempo ahora?
Seis años.
Y este mandato continuará hasta 2012.
Correcto.
Y los fondos están funcionando bien, entiendo.
Tenemos un anotado de 19.4% hasta el 30 de junio, lo cual es espectacular. No mal.
Si el estado tuviera eso, tal vez tendrían un presupuesto en place.
Lo siento.
Si el estado tuviera ese tipo de retorno, tal vez tendrían un presupuesto en place.
Creo que eso sería el caso.
Para el estado de California. Así que ha hecho bien con eso. Las LACERS, que es el sistema de jubilación para los civiles dentro de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, y entiendo en conversación contigo que asignas esos dólares previa la jubilación. El fórmula que usas, y hablamos del porcentaje que tenemos financiado, tienes una fórmula que es el actual, verdadero financiamiento de ese plan.
Sí, el financiamiento es una especie de ciencia complicada en que realmente no estás comparando naranjas con naranjas cuando estás hablando de un fondo versus otro. Refinamos nuestros beneficios de salud, lo que lleva nuestro financiamiento un poco atrás, ya sabes, frente al 100% de objetivo, pero estamos haciendo muy bien.
Así que continuaríamos con eso y continuaríamos con el ambiente positivo en eso para nuestro trabajo de civiles, los que están actualmente empleados y los que están retirados que dependen de eso para la vida.
Absolutamente.
Gracias. Madre Presidente, gracias. Solicita que confirmemos.
Muchas gracias, Sr. Zine, y muchas gracias por su servicio en nombre de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Madam Señor, si usted quisiera abrir el rol, cerrar el rol, tabular el voto.
11 ayes.
Bien, muchas gracias. Ahora volvamos al tema número uno. Oh, Sr. Reyes, creo que usted quiere hacer una motion para reconsiderar.
Solo quería ser muy claro que el tema 31 es de la agenda de ayer, no de hoy, así que, como el consejero Huizar, ese es el tema que necesita tener un cambio técnico.
Bien.
Solo quiero asegurarme de que eso fue para el registro.
Necesitamos hacer una motion para reconsiderar el tema 31 de la agenda de ayer, que fue el 17 de julio, martes, el 17 de julio. Bien, ¿podemos votar en eso ahora?
¿Podemos mantener eso en la mesa hasta que el consejero Huizar llegue?
Lo mantendremos hasta que regrese al tribunal, entonces. Volvamos al tema número uno. Tema número uno.
El tema número uno es la tabulación de la cuestión de ordenanza para la establecimiento del Distrito de Aumento de Negocios de Propiedad Central de la Ciudad de Downtown. Hay apoyo de la mayoría para este Distrito de Aumento de Negocios, así que la acción recomendada es adoptar la ordenanza.
Muchas gracias. Nuestra tarjeta de oradores es de un Sr. Matthew Dowd. Sr. Dowd, por
Muchas gracias. Ya conocí a Dowd aquí. Solo quiero dar una conciencia aumentada para todos. Normalmente, el tema número uno es una ordenanza de iluminación callejera para siempre, así que siempre que algo grande llegue a la primera, parece que es algo que están tratando de empujar realmente rápidamente bajo el radar. Pero no pasas por el radar de Matt Dowd, y esto confirma las evaluaciones que deben levantar sobre las propiedades dentro de ese Distrito de Aumento de Negocios, así que es un impuesto. tax. It's a tax of some description. I'm not an expert on taxation, I'm an expert on the First Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no further speakers on this matter. So Madam Clerk, if you would please open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
All right, thank you. That matter is approved. Next item?
Next item is item number fourteen, and that was called special by Councilmember Han for Councilmember Huizar.
Shall we hold that one? Keep holding. All right, we'll go on to the next item and come back to that.
The next item was special was item number seventeen, and that was called special for Councilmember Garcetti, but he's not here yet, so.
All right, he will arrive at eleven-thirty, so we will hold that item.
The next item is item number thirty-four, and that was called special by Councilmember Han.
Ms. Han?
You know, I actually called the special for our colleague, Bill Rosendahl, because if he was here, Bill would stand up and give a shout-out to the fact that Express Jet, for the first time, is coming to Los Angeles, but they're going to Ontario. And that fits in with our idea of regionalism, that everyone needs to share the benefits and the burdens of air traffic, and this is something that's positive. I was going to have Mark from Lawa come up and tell us maybe a little bit about Express Jet. What are the routes? And why is this important? And what did we do to convince Express Jet that they should go to Ontario?
Good morning, Mark Adams from Los Angeles World Airports. The department is very excited about Express Jet's new service. It's been in for a couple of months now, but the, this is the use and lease agreement that's before you today. In terms of the services that Express Jet provides at Ontario, they serve fourteen non-stop destinations that were previously not served out of Ontario. These include Austin, Texas, El Paso, San Antonio, Boise, Kansas City, a lot of medium-sized markets that would generally get overflown by carriers with larger jets. The particular jet that Express Jet is using is a fifty-seat Embraer jet that is well-suited to the length of flight we're talking about here, and Express Jet's initial load factors are in the thirty to forty percent range, in the high thirties, low forties, which is better than we would expect for a startup like this, so we're off to a good start, and we look forward to a long relationship with Express Jet.
And what we're approving today is what, a twenty-five-year?
A twenty-five-year use and lease agreement, which basically spells out the conditions for use of the terminals, the use of the runways, the way the landing fees get paid, and all that sort of thing.
So a twenty-five-year lease pretty much says that we are going to have a long relationship.
They're in it for the long haul.
They must believe it's going to be successful, or that wouldn't have not have been something they would have been willing to do either.
Right, exactly. By signing this agreement, it does give them a, you know, a break on the landing fees, and it's good for, it's a win-win for both the airport and the airline.
Good. Well, again, I'm giving this a shout-out because I think Bill Rosendahl would, if he was here, would really say, this is what we're trying to do. We're trying to get more services out of Ontario to service clearly a population that has been underserved so far. So this is a good thing, and I ask for your aye vote on this lease agreement with Express Jet. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Han. Mr. Labange?
Madam President, and thank you. I heard your words as I came into the building. I appreciate that, and that would make credit. Just a question. In a year's time, what would Express Jet's fees be, an estimate for landing?
We anticipate that their terminal rent will be about a million eight, a million nine every year, and they'll be paying anywhere, depending on how many flights they bring in, anywhere from about a half million to a million and a half in landing fees.
And what, just to get an idea, because I got to ask you this question to have a better understanding, the landing fees are a weight factor, correct?
Correct. So many dollars per pound of landing.
Is that done internationally? Is that the cutaway we?
That's the way, that's the standard practice, yeah.
Right. And what is a seven-four-seven coming in from Paris, let's say, pay? Just an idea, you got an idea? If you don't have an idea now, just let me know next time.
I could get back to you on that.
Just to give an idea, because I do strongly believe that it's important to distribute air traffic throughout Southern California, but also know that the Los Angeles International Airport is a hub for many airlines, and the fact that they have a hub, they need that connection, so it's not as simple as diversion in Palmdale or to Ontario. But I just would like those numbers, and I think if we shared it all with council, I think it'd be beneficial.
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. There are no further speakers on this item. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Next order of business? Next matter?
Madam President, there is a request to reconsider item forty-six.
Motion for reconsideration, and the request was made on behalf of Mr.?
Councilmember Wesson.
Okay, so Mr. Wesson is making a motion for reconsideration on number forty-six?
Yes, Madam Chair, it's to receive and file this item.
Thank you very much. Open the roll on the motion? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
All right, now, Mr. Wesson has requested that the item be received and filed, so Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll again? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
All right, thank you very much. Next order of business?
Madam President, we are expecting twelve members soon, so there's a request to reconsider items one, nine, ten, and eleven, since they are ordinances.
All right. What other items can we handle at this time?
At this time, we can handle the closed sessions, or we are still waiting for item seventeen for Councilmember Garcetti, and item fourteen for Councilmember Huizar, and the reconsideration of the item that was considered yesterday for Councilmember Huizar.
Okay, Mr. Huizar is here. Mr. Huizar?
Madam President, I'd like to see if we could take up item fourteen and thirty-one right now. Fourteen, I'd like to ask for continuation for three weeks, and thirty-one is simply to correct a technical change on an item we approved yesterday.
Okay, thank you very much.
Will we take up fourteen?
Yeah. Motion to continue on item fourteen. Open the roll?
Three weeks.
Three weeks?
Mm-hmm.
Close the roll? Tabulate the vote on that item? And then the?
Eleven ayes.
Great.
Item number thirty-one, if we could delete?
Madam, just before you proceed, Mr. Huizar, did we do the motion to reconsider item thirty-one from yesterday's agenda yet? I know Mr. Reyes made the request and asked that we hold it on the desk until Mr. Huizar was in the chamber.
Just for the record, Madam President, item thirty-one from yesterday is Councilfile zero-seven dash one zero zero four. It's a Planning and Land Use Management and Budget and Finance Committee report relative to the Garvanza Historic Preservation Overlay Zone Survey. And it has not actually been reconsidered yet, I don't believe.
Okay, so if we can open the roll on the motion for reconsideration?
Yes, we can. We can do that right now.
Okay. Open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Okay, Mr. Huizar, the matter is before us now.
Thank you very much, Madam President. On that report from yesterday, if we could delete section A five A from the report, I've been advised when the CIO's office, that's just a technical correction. That's my motion.
Thank you very much. No one in the queue. Madam Clerk, if you would please, without objection, open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huizar. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business would be item number seventeen, and that was called special for Councilmember Garcetti.
Okay, he's slated to arrive at eleven-thirty this morning. Do we have any other items that are?
Aside from the closed sessions, no.
All right, hold, all right, that'll be fine. I need to recuse myself on the first closed session item, so I'll ask Ms. Grule to take my place here, the chair.
We will be going into closed session. We will be asking the members of the public that are here to exit the chambers, and only those individuals who are directly related to the items that will be before us for the city staff. So guards, if you could please clear the room. So guards, if you could please clear the room.
...
Okay, so we're back. This is the City Council. Madam Clerk, what is before us?
Um...
Item forty-five, please.
That would be item forty-five, and that's the closed session. And that is, uh, the case of Richard C. Sanchez versus City of Los Angeles. Uh, for this, uh, the recommendation is to, for the promotion of the plaintiff to the position of Assistant Deputy Building Superintendent Two, retroactive to July first, two thousand and six. Uh, also, the plaintiff is to receive a retroactive check for the difference in his current salary and the Assistant Deputy Building Superintendent Two salary, retroactive to July first, two thousand and six, in the amount of eighteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Based on a recommendation of the city attorney, correct?
Actually, that's a recommendation of the C A O. This is a conflict case.
Okay, based on a recommendation of the C A O. For a settlement of a conflict case. Uh, any questions? No questions, let's, uh, open the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, thank you. Next item, please.
Uh, for the record, uh, Mr. President, the, uh, recommendation also includes the city will pay eighteen thousand, five hundred to the plaintiff to cover a portion of his city attorney fees and costs.
Correct. Is that okay, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. President. And also, for the record, in closed session, the vote was ten to nothing with council members Parks, Perry, Rosendahl, Zion, and Garcetti, um, absent. And there's also a request that this item go forthwith.
You're right, forthwith on that matter. And, uh, now we're back to the next item. Madam Clerk.
Next item is item number thirty-six, and that is a settlement for six hundred thousand in the case of Ryan O'Connell versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay. Um, Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Uh, thank you very much. Next item?
Next item is item number thirty-seven, and that is a settlement for three hundred ninety-five thousand in the case of Shubara Leon versus City of Los Angeles.
All right, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, thank you very much. Next item?
Next item is item number thirty-seven, and that is a settlement for three hundred ninety-five thousand in the case of Shubara Leon versus City of Los Angeles.
All right, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, thank you very much. Next item?
And for the record, Madam President, in closed session, the vote was eleven to nothing with council members Parks, Rosendahl, Zion, and Garcetti absent.
Yes. Thank you very much for that clarification. Um, next item?
Next item is item number thirty-eight, and that is a settlement for a hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars payable at two hundred and thirty dollars per week plus life pension thereafter of one hundred and eight dollars, twenty-three cents per week in the case of Harold Davis versus City of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. Would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next is item number thirty-one and, uh, thirty-nine, excuse me, and that is a settlement of a hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars plus a life pension thereafter of seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-five cents payable at seventy-seven dollars and thirty-one cents per week. And that is in the case of Lawrence Majid versus City of Los Angeles.
All right, thank you very much. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next is item number forty, and that is a settlement of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars plus life pension thereafter of a hundred dollars and fifty cents per week. And that is the case of Paul Roberts versus City of Los Angeles.
Uh, thank you very much. Again, please open the roll. Close the roll. Uh, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And next ma- next matter?
Next is item number forty-one, and that is a settlement for a hundred and twenty-five thousand plus five thousand for burial expenses. And that is the case of Thomas Jefferson versus the City of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Please open the roll, please. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next is item number forty-two, and that is a settlement of a hundred and six thousand, three se- three hundred and seventy-five dollars plus life pension thereafter of fifty-four dollars and eleven cents per week. And that is in the case of Jeffrey Sandifer versus City of Los Angeles.
Uh, thank you very much. Again, uh, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item?
Next item is item forty-four, and that is the settlement of a hundred and fifteen thousand in the case of William Pearl versus City of Los Angeles.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. City Attorney?
And for the record, on item number forty-four, the vote in closed session was eleven to nothing with council members Parks, Rosendahl, Zion, and Garcetti absent.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Uh, does that conclude our closed session items that are voted on in public?
Yes, it does, Madam President.
All right, thank you. I believe we have an item for Council President Garcetti. Next? Do the ordinances next. All right, Madam Clerk, next matter, next order of business?
Next order of business would be the consideration of the ordinances, and those would be item number one, number nine, ten, eleven. Uh, also, items twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, do we need to vote on those individually, or can we do it collectively?
I don't believe you do, but were nine, ten, eleven reconsidered already? They could be as a group.
All right, so we'll open the roll on the number, uh, item numbers, uh, just listed by our city clerk for the record. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you would, please open the roll. Close the roll, then tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, next order of business?
Next would be item number seventeen. That was called special for Council Member Garcetti.
Mr. President?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Um, and thank you for holding this on the desk, colleagues. Um, this morning, I had the good fortune of being in Jack Weiss's district at UCLA and joined more than, uh, three hundred developers, environmental advocates, and professionals at the first-ever Sustainability Summit, um, by the Los Angeles Business Council. I know, uh, Mr. Weiss, Ms. Gruel, joined us last night, um, atop the Bradley Ballroom as well to discuss how we can continue to be greener in our building. And Mr. Smith and Mr. Reyes, um, have been key advocates in moving forward with that throughout the city. Um, the overflowing room this morning was testament to how much has changed in such a short period of time. And the City of Los Angeles went green long before the rest of this country has decided to kind of join us, uh, by making sure that our buildings will be LEED certified. We're going to silver soon and LEED a certification. But our own program in here in Los Angeles has really helped create this tidal wave of momentum as we've worked with the private sector to look at how we can get the private sector to embrace green building. Buildings, um, emit some thirty-five percent of the, the CO2 emissions, um, that we face as a world. And it'll be an important place for us, not only locally for our landfills, but as well for our energy needs. Ted Lu, Assemblymember, has been working, um, also at the state level to see how we can reduce our ecological footprint statewide. And we all know the benefits of green buildings, whether it's increased efficiency, better health, less in our landfills, um, and less energy consumed. Um, but his bill that is before us here today to adopt a position on would require that developers would have to build to a LEED gold standard for any large commercial projects. We already have a program where if you go LEED, you go to the front of the line. It's a green light development program. Um, but we here should embrace this effort. Um, Boston and other cities, um, have done this. The mayor at twelve-thirty will be announcing the plan that many of our staffs have been working together with him on for green building in the city. So it's an appropriate day as well that we give, um, a little bit more wind to Ted Lu's sales, um, as this A B eight-eight-eight moves forward to look at green building throughout, uh, the state. Climate change has been a significant cause, um, in the environment, and we're looking for concrete, local solutions, but also statewide ways that we can manifest going green, reducing our costs for our builders, and working hand-in-hand. The building industry is sometimes farther ahead now of government than we are, whether it's green roofs that I know Mr. Reyes has really been pushing for. The technology's ready to go, but we're standing in the way. Whether it's gray water recycling, which people want to do, catching rainwater and using that for irrigation, but still, the county is standing in the way of doing that. So we need to get on the train, and one way to do that is to support this, um, and to get all of our large-scale developments in the state to go gold-green. And in doing so, I think we will leave quite a legacy for, um, everyone behind. So I urge your support. I know it'd mean a lot to the Assemblymember, and we'll put it right up there at the top of our, um, legislative agenda for this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Han. Um, all right, what, Ms. Gruel, why don't you go next, and we'll circle back to Ms. Han.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I, I just wanted to stand, uh, in support of this resolution as well. And, uh, last evening, as we, uh, were here in the Bradley Tower talking to individuals about the importance of green building, about the importance of sustainability, and you look at the future of our city, uh, it's about, uh, planning, it's about transportation, it's about how we as a city can develop policies. But I think the, one of the important things that struck me last night was also the fact that it wasn't just public policymakers, um, it was other stakeholders, the business community saying, "We care about the environment, we care about the future of the city." Uh, to, to the point of just regular people in the neighborhood where we're talking about whether it be, um, uh, the fact, uh, that, uh, we, uh, have global warming and how we each can do our part in that. And the City of Los Angeles has taken positions that have allowed us, uh, to be one of the, the greenest city and to be in the forefront. And the L A B C event, the Sustainability Conference today, I think, is one which is incredibly important, uh, for this city, and that the state legislation by Assemblymember Lu is a integral part of that. Uh, so thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for your leadership on this, and to our colleagues. Uh, I told them last night, I think we have one of the greenest councils that we've ever had here in the City of Los Angeles. Uh, so I wholeheartedly stand in support of this legislation. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Um, this keeps popping up, but she is not, not requested to speak. Um, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I, uh, just wanted to reemphasize the incredible opportunity we have as a council, and I'm hoping we get to the day where, through our own experience in building, for example, the green rooftops, we understand the cost. Uh, if we're dealing with the business sector, if we're gonna be talking about new economies, new cottage industries, when it comes to materials and supplies, when it comes to designing, uh, whether we're retrofitting old buildings or building new, that we have an opportunity here as a city to research and establish a level of confidence for the private sector to invest in this. So I know Councilmember Perry has a green rooftop being built in one of the city facilities, I understand, as one of the first case, Central Avenue's case examples. It'd be great if we can have them give us a report back. And I'm not sure what committee that would go to, be Public Works?
Uh, it may go to Energy and Environment and Public Works if they want, yeah.
But if Energy and Environment can look at that case, and we could, and that'll be Councilmember Perry's chairmanship, and actually delineate the cost factors, design, material, the ability to sustain, the level of punishment it will take, uh, water, uh, effect on material, these are issues that can get us to a point where it'd be more inviting and more of a common sense, practical matter to do green rooftops. So, uh, glad we're standing up in support of this measure by, uh, Assembly Bill eight-eight-eight. And thank you, Councilmember Garcetti, for your stewardship and the leadership of this council, getting us to this point where we can articulate these specifics as it comes to the business of being green, so it can make it more inviting for others to invest. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Appreciate the words and our chair of our Energy and Environment Committee, uh, Jan Perry.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Garcetti, and I appreciate Mr. Reyes mentioning the project, uh, at Forty-third and Central, just south of the Dunbar Hotel, as the first, uh, city LEED certified building. And I, you know, I, I'm pleased that, you know, as a city, we've already stepped up to and, uh, have a project in the pipeline, and I expect more, but I think to expand the concept and also show the, the efficacy and the potential for economic development, and that sustainable, uh, green standards can be met, uh, on a statewide basis without compromise to structural integrity and provide, uh, new skills for, uh, the future is a good thing. So I appreciate what, uh, Assemblyman Lu has done, and then also agree and would like to support.
Thank you. And, and, uh, that building was also highlighted in this morning's, uh, conference as well. Uh, Deborah Weintraub from our, our City Engineering Bureau mentioned it, so we're very excited to see that. With that, Madam Clerk, there's nobody else on the speaker queue, so let's open the roll, close the roll. Please tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. We'll send that forthwith without objection. Next item, please. Our next order of business?
Next are motions for posting a referral.
Those motions will be posted and referred.
Uh, Mr. President, you have one excuse on the desk.
Okay, can I hear that excuse?
Uh, Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused on July twenty-fourth to leave at eleven-thirty a.m. for personal business. A motion is required.
Okay, I will move Ms. Gruel seconds without objection. Mr. Weiss's excuse for personal business.
And that clears the desk.
Okay, are there any procedural announcements, folks? Again, we're trying to do our, our community announcements. We're gonna be setting up a camera at the beginning of the week, but any procedural announcements, Ms. Perry?
Seju, this is a community announcement.
All right, well, until we have that set up, go ahead, and we can make a community announcement.
Well, I don't have a final procedure.
That's fine, go ahead.
Uh, tomorrow is the, uh, opening of the, um, ever-evolving Arts District, Farmer's Market. Um, they've had two locations downtown, and our, our newest location, which I think many of us will enjoy, will be on the south lawn of Los Angeles City Hall. So, uh, please come by and patronize them, not patronize them.
What time will it be open?
Uh, I, ten o'clock.
Ten, ten o'clock.
And, uh, promises to be, uh, grassroots effort, and I hope that people will come out and purchase their wares and, uh, support them.
Great. And rumors about Bill Rosendahl's eggs being sold there, or just rumors?
Well, he's not certified, so he's...
Okay, he's not a certified farmer yet, okay. Well, we look forward to, uh, seeing that on, uh, City Hall's South Lawn tomorrow, the first farmer's market at ten a.m. Any other, uh, announcements, colleagues? If not, do we have any, um, any adjourning motions today? We do. If I can ask everybody to please rise for our adjourning motions. And we'll begin with Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President and members. I'm, I'm doing this on behalf of Councilmember Zion, who has two funerals, unfortunately, to attend today. We, we request that you adjourn in the memory of Janine Armstrong, who was born and raised in Wisconsin. She, uh, August fifteenth, nineteen thirty-three is when she was born. Uh, she became a very close friend of our mayor, Tom Bradley. And, and maybe Labanz, you can help me with this. She became a member of the San Joaquin Valley Coordination Committee to help bring the Olympics here. I didn't know that we, we had something in that, uh, area. She was married for fifty-two years to the former mayor of Clovis. Uh, his name is Harry Armstrong, and she's survived by her husband, uh, childrens, Tom and Jim, and her daughter, Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Are there adjourning motions, Ms. Han?
Thank you. I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Hilda Bostic, who passed away on July eleventh at the age of seventy-five. Um, Hilda first came to L.A., uh, and settled in Watts in nineteen sixty-five, which was not a great summer. Uh, so she obviously witnessed the, the Watts riots as soon as she came here. But, uh, her children attended Locke High School, and Hilda remained a dedicated volunteer at Locke for more than forty years, uh, long after her children graduated. She's survived by her five children, James, Virginia, Angela, Claudette, and Hilda, and her seven grandchildren. The viewing will be held tomorrow at Roosevelt Memorial Park from ten-thirty to three. The viewing will be held tomorrow at Roosevelt Memorial Park from ten-thirty to three, and the services will be Friday at eleven-thirty a.m. at Saint John Episcopal Church on West Adams Boulevard, the community and certainly the high school will miss her.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Are there other adjourning motions today? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. And colleagues, we will next be in session this Friday, that is, uh, the twentieth...